Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the January 21st, 2025 Disability Issues Advisory Board Meeting. I am Teresa Smith, Vice Chair of the Disability Issues Advisory Board. Thank you for joining us this evening. The Vice Chair reminds the members to ensure that their microphones are muted unless acknowledged to speak. This will help minimize background noise in the recording of the meeting. We had a long three-day weekend, guys. It's a little cold outside. But I hope that everyone is feeling refreshed and that you guys are ready to get into the work of the board. So let's get started. Ms. Johnson, can you please take the role?
Sure. Sylvia Maya. Stephanie Blackwell. Trinell Bowman.
Present.
Sarah L. Byrne. Tricia Dorsey.
Present.
Rachel Doyle.
Present.
Jamal Jongo. Irma Cattrall. Janie Payne.
Present.
Brittany. Brittany Patrick.
Present.
Teresa Smith.
Present.
Sharice Vickery. And Erica Wingate Robinson.
Present.
Okay, we have eight. You have a quorum.
Great. All right, guys. In our last meeting, there was a motion that was put on the floor for the chairs to follow up with the board members' office on a couple of items. So I just want to provide an update for you all there. And then we'll move into getting the adoption of the agenda. So let me get the first item up. We had requested that an email address be established for this board so that we can have an inbox to communicate with, as well as a place to store documentation that needs to be shared among the members. That item has been completed. We're just waiting on the web team to finish their portion of the process. So it's been completed from an initiation standpoint. There was a question about whether or not our subcommittees needed to meet, or whether or not the subcommittee members could meet in private, or whether or not we needed to have an open meeting. So the status on that is that if there is not a quorum present, we can meet in private. A quorum for us would be seven members. So as long as there's less than seven members that meet and does not need to be opened. And it would only be discussion items that would be occurring in those meetings. Any decisions that need to be made, that will have to come to the full board. We have some vacancies. One of them includes an ADA position in addition to two district seats, District Nine and District Five, if I'm not mistaken. We're waiting to hear back about the ADA position. Yeah, we're waiting to hear back about the ADA position. You guys were already aware about the District Five vacancy. But since the last meeting, our District Nine member resigned. She also held the position of Reporting Secretary. So I just want to put out there at our next meeting, we will be looking for a Reporting Secretary. So I hope you guys start thinking about possibly signing up for that role. Then there was a question about announcing the re-establishment of this board. So what was discussed in the meeting was that we could reach out to our PTA and PTO groups as a means of letting folks know that this group is established or re-established. But we also are in the process of working with the administration, as well as the Communications Department, to draft up an announcement. And I believe those were all of the updates that we needed to provide to you all. Are there any questions? All right, here and done. I want to move to item 2.0, Adoption of Meeting Agenda.
Excuse me, Vice Chair. You do have a hand raised, Ms. Brown.
Thank you. And I just remember, guys, I need to let you all know. So Chair Blackwell is running behind tonight, so I'm stepping in for her. Was not expecting this. So I don't have my computer. I'm using my cellphone, and I cannot see raised hands. So thank you, Ms. Vickery, for alerting me of that. So Ms. Brown, I recognize you.
Yes, thank you so much, Ms. Smith. This is actually for Ms. Johnson. I did not hear my name called on the roll, and I just wanted to ensure that.
Yeah, so board members, yes. So you wouldn't be considered a voting member. So the voting members, they go through the roll call. Because you're the board liaison, so you're not considered a voting member, yeah, per policy.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. And I wanted to make sure, because I see my name here twice.
Oh, yeah.
Ms. Bowman and myself have the same name.
You may have logged in. You might be logged in on multiple devices.
Okay, I'm only logged in on one, but it's okay. That is all. Thank you. Sorry about that, Teresa.
No, it's perfectly fine. And I'm actually glad that you chimed in, because I did tell Chair Blackwell if you showed up to give you an opportunity to introduce yourself. So I would like to take a moment to allow you to do so. And I would like to alert the board that Ms. Robin Brown is our board member liaison. That was just announced this past Thursday. So Ms. Brown, you have the floor to introduce yourself to everyone.
You know, I should have been a little bit more prepared to introduce myself. Thanks for putting me on the spot. No, I am super excited about being the liaison for DIAB. I thank you guys. I thank you guys so much for the work that you all do. When we have time, I will give a personal story. Teresa has heard my story. Maybe some of you have heard my story. But I am super grateful. Please reach out to me for any questions, any way that I could be of service, any way that I could assist. Don't hesitate to email me. I am definitely going to make sure that I respond back. And if I don't have the answer, I have a wonderful team of people who I work with. Ms. Bowman is excellent. She's like my right hand when it comes to different situations like this. And of course, I'm leaning on Teresa and the rest of the team, Ms. Blackwell. So it was so nice to meet you guys. I represent District Five. So of course, if we have any residents in the Bowie area, Upper Marlboro area, that's essentially where my territory is. But no matter where you are, please feel free to reach out to me. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I don't think any other hands are up, but if I am wrong, someone just let me know.
You go, Vice Chair. Continue.
Thank you. So item 2.0 is the adoption of the meeting agenda. I would like to hear a motion to adopt the meeting agenda.
I move that we adopt the meeting agenda.
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded that we adopt the meeting agenda for January 21st, 2025. Are there any objections?
Vice Chair, if I could just, if I could have a minute just to sort of interrupt. So for these items, you can just simply, if there's no objections, kind of move forward. You don't need to ask for a second. You can just say, if there's no objections, the item is adopted or approved. And so we don't need seconds for this one.
Fabulous. That works for me. All right. Are there any objections? All right, the January 21st, 2025 Disability Issues Advisory Board meeting agenda is adopted. Item 3.0, Approval of Minutes. I do still have to get a motion, correct?
No, if you look in the script where I have, if there are no corrections, do you see that part?
Oh, I do. I'm not used to this. Okay. All right. Okay. Are there any objections with approving the minutes for November 6th, 2024, as well as December 17th, 2024? All right, here and none. Here are no corrections. The amended November 6th, 2024, and the December 17th, 2024 Disability Issues Advisory Board minutes are approved. All right, item 4.0. So we received a couple of agenda items, and ideally, we could not put everything on the agenda this evening. So it does not mean that those items are not important. It doesn't mean that we won't have an opportunity to discuss them. So I just wanted to open up and state that. The first item that we would like to discuss is the DIAB Purpose and Definition.
Vice Chair, I'm sorry again. Before you start the discussion, if you could read the disclaimer, just so for the good of the board, so the members know how we're going to proceed with the discussion. Okay.
I'm glad this is in here. All right, guys. Hope your ears are open. Please advise that we will allow two and a half minutes for discussion per member, and we will allow two rounds per agenda item and vote for a third round if necessary. If you wish to contribute, please click the raised hand icon and unmute your microphone when you are recognized. So Ms. Johnson, I will ask for your assistance with recognizing individuals from their raised hands. All right, so the first item is the DIAB Purpose and Definition. Looking at my notes, is there any discussion on this item? I believe, Ms. Payne, I believe this was one item that you had proposed that we discussed. Would you like to lead the discussion on this item?
I put it on our proposed agenda, and thank you, Vice Chair Smith, for putting it there, because there seemed in our prior meetings, there seemed to be some discussion amongst the group around, do we need to revisit it? Are we sure about it? And so that was my reason for putting it for, to see if the group needed to have discussion about it.
Thank you.
And if there, no.
See any hands, I don't mind jumping in here on this one. As everyone know, Policy 1700. Can you guys still hear me? Can, okay. Policy 1700 is pretty much our guiding light for the work that we will be doing. We do know that when we had our very first meeting, at least from my memory, I had asked if if we would be looking at special education, would we also be looking at facility issues? And there was one other item. And I thought the response was yes. But when you look at Policy 1700, I don't think it captures everything, such as some of the challenges that families have with special education. I think Policy 1700 deals with the physical nature of a disability, and the cognitive piece is missing from there. That's just my interpretation of that policy. So I'll pause there and see if anyone else has some discussion on this item. All right, Ms. Patrick, I recognize you.
Can you all hear me? Okay, I concur with what you're saying, Ms. Smith, that Policy 1700 also centers around ADA and does not make mention of IDEA at all, or the quality of special education services, which is one of the reasons why I previously made a motion to possibly make recommendations to the board around revising the policy in addition to the bullets that are specified here around employment and hiring, new school construction, and access to facilities.
Thank you for that, Ms. Patrick. The chair recognizes. My goodness, I know you told us your last name. Is it Ms. Byrne?
Yes, it is.
Okay, great.
Yes, my recollection, similar to yours, Ms. Smith, and to probably others, in that I think we came to this with a vague kind of understanding of the purpose of the Disability Issues Advisory Board. And we saw our convening as an opportunity. So it seems the last time that was like 2013 or something. So our convening is an opportunity to expand upon the scope and the purpose, should that be what this body decides upon. I would like, I don't know if this is the proper time to put that out there, but I think considering that in the, what was it, the Special Education, the Special Ed Board of Education Report, about 16,500 total students in PGCPs make up special ed, which is a sizable amount that I would hope for. The Disability Issues Advisory Board to include special education. And I understand that that would involve bringing IDEA under its scope, but that would be the nitty-gritty. Yeah, so I would like to consider, or for there to be a convening, to consider expanding its purpose, similar to what Ms. Patrick advanced.
Thank you. Are there others? Ms. Vickery? The chair recognizes you.
Thank you. It's my understanding that we might have to put, I agree with the previous speakers in discussion. It's my understanding that we may have to make this as a recommendation, and we might not be able to touch that this time. What I would like, I guess, for us to get clarity on, and I didn't have a chance to bring this up last time, and this maybe will give us a path forward, is are we making one set of recommendations underneath one report, since this is a two-year position? Are we making one report this year, and then a secondary report, or a second report next year? And if so, maybe upon working through some of these things and realizing that, hey, we can't pull IDEA in at this first round, maybe we can make that recommendation. Maybe the board can take that up throughout their business. And then maybe we can get a change in Policy 1700, maybe for next year. I'm not sure. I'm just trying to further this discussion. But I think maybe we ask that question, Ms. Smith, back to the board for some direction, or even if Ms. Brown could take it back to the board and come back with some direction on that. But I think that as members, we all feel that we are missing a key portion when we talk about the different abilities that both our staff and our students have. Thank you.
Thanks. I do want to respond to some of the things that you put out there. But before I do so, is there any more discussion on this item? All right. I think as it relates to your question about whether or not we're doing one report, one set of recommendations, I think as a board, we can determine that. I think I have a follow-up question. And I don't know if Ms. Johnson, or Ms. Brown, or even Ms. Bowman, has the historical information. I'm assuming that it may take historical information to answer my question. I don't know what the thought process was when Board Policy 1700 was put in place. Whatever the response to that is, I guess my question is, do we need, as far as the IDEA portion, does it need to fall under Board Policy 1700, or could another policy be established? That's kind of where my question is. Because I understand that there's a process to update policies, and there's a lot of work to be done dealing with IDEA. So I'm just kind of curious, is there any historical information on what the thought process was when Board Policy 1700 was put in place? Because maybe intentionally IDEA was excluded. I don't know, but I'm just kind of curious. And is there another pathway for this group? I'm saying this group, because if there is another pathway for us to capture the recommendations that need to be put forth, I would kind of like to see this group do that during this term. So I'll pause there to see if Ms. Johnson, Ms. Brown, or Ms. Bowman have any thoughts surrounding that.
Vice Chair, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go right ahead. Go right.
Okay, thank you, Board Member Brown. I was going to say that I could certainly maybe work with you, Ms. Board Member Brown, in terms of getting that information for DIAB. And then we could follow up with leadership, what we find. But as I was mentioning to you earlier, Vice Chair, you and the chair earlier, the policies can certainly be amended to cover the needs of this advisory board. So that's just something to keep in mind. But we will certainly look for that historical data for you all. And I'm making a follow-up note for that.
Thank you. Ms. Patrick, I know you've had your hand up, but if you just give me just one second, Ms. Brown, were you going to add on there?
Yeah, the only thing I was going to add on, and Ms. Johnson essentially said it primarily, so we'll definitely get connected. It's clear that the last time the policy was revisited was in 2015. And this is obviously 10 years prior to even me being on the board. So we're definitely going to look into consideration of that. And then speaking to Ms. Robin Welsh, who is very helpful when it comes to our policy and governance, we do also have a new chair, Felton Moss, excuse me, Dr. Felton Moss, who is the new Chair for Policy and Governance. So we can make him aware of it as well, but we'll keep you all posted.
Thank you. All right, the chair recognizes Ms. Patrick.
Thank you, Vice Chair Smith. This is more of a point of clarification. I noticed that there is also a Special Education Citizens Advisory Committee that is working within the district. And their focus seems to truly be on IDEA. They have already presented recommendations to the board in April of this year. And some of that information was captured at the recent School Board Business Meeting on the 16th. And so my question is a further probing question to what's been asked before about the history. But maybe what are the differences between DIAB here and then the Special Education Citizens Advisory Committee? Because that work does seem to be more IDEA-focused and truly established.
Great question. And we actually have the chair here. So I'm curious, Ms. Payne, do you want to add any commentary there?
I'll add, and then Trinell, please chime in. So you know, CCAC's role is to be an advisory body to PGCPs on a broad set of issues for our children with disability. And you know, that covers a wide range of things. And so we work with the department in a collaborative way to resolve issues, right? That can be individual issues that our parents have, that can be systemic issues, because we're really thinking about strategy, right, those systemic issues. And the work, actually, Ms. Smith, as well as Ms. Alita Jerry Clutter, right, helped to sort of raise some systemic issues that needed to be addressed that we then took forward to Trinell Bowman and her team. And that's what created the action plan that we have now. And so we've been working on that action plan since that time. So that's how I would describe, you know, where the DIAB has these specific three areas that we're focused on. Ours is much broader from my perspective. That's how I would describe it.
The chair recognizes Ms. Bowman.
Yeah, so the only thing that I would add to what Ms. Payne mentioned to the group is that the CCAC, Special Education Citizens Advisory Committee, is required under the Individuals with Disability Education Act. So throughout the country, every single school system in our country has a CCAC committee. It is required, again, under the federal regulations, to look at all issues that face students with disabilities. So this year, we could be focused on these sets of recommendations, and next year, it could be another. The other piece that I would add is that CCAC members are an extension of any systemic work we do. So anything around parent resources, they're at the table with us, looking at those resources. They're part of our Special Education Staffing Committee. If we're doing any type of in-depth focus interviews related to any special ed issues or resources, they're also part of those reviews. When we are monitored from the Maryland State Department of Education, and they're doing case study interviews to get perceptions of how special ed is viewed or implemented in the district, they are a required team member that must be interviewed. We also have a state CCAC board that's at the state level, where we have representatives from the local district that actually advises and gives recommendations to the Maryland State Department of Education. So it is more about the programmatic aspect of special ed as it relates to IDEA. But if there's accessibility of buildings that may come up as an issue, no issue is off limits to CCAC based on the functioning. And we do have the COMA regulations, the Code of Maryland Regulations, known as COMAR, where I can give you the specifics of the governing body of CCAC as it relates to Maryland.
Thank you, Ms. Bowman. The chair recognizes Ms. Vickery.
Thank you, Chair. It sounds like, from the explanation of Ms. Payne and Ms. Bowman, it sounds like then, or I would, from my understanding, it sounds like we may be limited to 1700. Not saying that it doesn't need to be reviewed, because again, as Ms. Brown indicated, it is a 10-year-old policy. But it sounds like there has been a longstanding work that is already focused in and narrowed in around IDEA. And let me not say narrowed, because that's not the appropriate word. But that their focus is definitely IDEA, and they are spread across the spectrum of PGCPs, focusing on that. So I would encourage the chair and vice chair to, I guess, work with Ms. Brown around more clarity around 1700. It seems just very vague. And again, that could just be from the years of it just being there and not being touched and updated.
Thank you. We would definitely take this on as a follow-up item. Ms. Payne, I have a quick question, a follow-up question as it relates. I'm trying to think of the statue in my head. Does CCAC only govern by IDEA and not the Rehabilitation Act as it relates to 504 students? If you're talking, Ms. Payne, you might be on mute.
Yeah, I was thinking about that question. I guess, said, I don't know that there, if it's an issue impacting students with disabilities in Prince George's County, I- i- if it's an issue impacting students with disabilities in Prince George's County. Responds, right? So that's how I would respond to that. Um, Trinell, you know, would you see that differently or what's your response?
The Chair recognizes Ms. Bowman.
So I went, I'm just gonna read a statement from the Maryland State Department of Education. Governing the um. Special Ed Advisory Committee is really around in accordance with the provisions of IDEA. But certainly, if you're looking at any type of um. You know, Section five oh four does govern all students with disabilities, as Ms. Payne said. So if there's, there are certain pieces of the regulation under Section five oh four that governs even students with IEP. And there is some intersection between Section five oh four and IDEA. Because ultimately, for both, both regulations, we really have to provide a free and appropriate education. So rather you're under a five oh four plan or you're under an IEP, we're really looking at making sure that you're getting those um. Services or accommodations as indicated in both of those plans. So there's definitely some intersect, I would say, between the two. But primarily, when we think about C CAC, it's really that alignment to the provisions of IDEA. If I've answered that. And we can also have um, legal weigh-in, weigh-in, but when we look at COMAR, it's really around. The IDEA pieces um, of the federal legislation. But certainly, we know Section five oh four governs all students, even those that are on IEPs.
Okay, thank you for that. So um, Ms. Johnson, guess I'll, there'll be some follow-up because I'm just thinking of questions in my head right now to just make sure. That we're touching every piece of how uh, board policy seventeen hundred may have been in place. Um, and even if we don't have the information, I think it would just help. This board know how to move forward in um, you know, putting a motion, putting forth a motion. Um, putting forth recommendations, whatever the case may be. All right, um, so we'll move on to the next agenda item.
Um, Vice Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt, but um, I wanted to add to that. There is a form that uh, you would be able to fo- um, to fill out that would be sent to Dr. Moss. Um, since he is the Chair of Policy and Governance. And you can include anything you want in there um, as far as revising the policy. For this um, advisory board. So whenever you all are ready, um, I'll send that to you. To you and the Chair, yes.
Thank you. All right, the next item, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Payne, the Chair recognizes you.
Um, thank you. I was just gonna say too, that. And you know, I, I recognize there are protocols and I recognize that this board has a certain scope, right? But I think. What, I appreciate being Chair of C CAC, sitting on this board. And if there's the opportunity that this, that the board members feel like there's an issue that C CAC ought to bring forth, right? I think that's an advantage for us that we have. So um, just want to put that out there.
Great, thank you. Thank you for sharing that.
Um, Vice Chair, sorry to interrupt again. So this is something that you are looking to do. There needs to be a motion to um, to decide as a collective to revise the policy. And then uh, we can move from, from there if that's something.
So I don't know if we're there yet. And this is just me. I mean, the Board can choose to put a motion on the floor. Um. Think for me, I still have questions that need to be answered. I, I, I really need to understand what was the intention. On board policy seventeen hundred. If we already know that C CAC is governed by DEA. Um, but there are other, there's another statute that governs students who have disabilities. Um, and, and board, and uh, board policy seventeen hundred only speaks of ADA. So um. So yeah, I think for me, I need some answers on what was the. What was the thought process on excluding information um, at the time this policy was established? Or excluding topics, maybe I should say it like that. Um, so I don't know, I don't know if we're ready for a motion just that, but um, I see two other hands. Ms. Vickery? The Chair recognizes you.
Thank you. I actually was just gonna make a motion that we have this as an agenda item at our next meeting. Um, so that we can, one, see if we have the answers back from the Board. And two, um, maybe we can get to a motion, motion. So I'm moved that we add this as an agenda item for our next meeting.
Second.
Okay, that's gonna, that's gonna require um, a roll call vote, uh, Vice Chair.
Okay, um, Ms. Johnson, can you take the, can you take the, the role for me?
Okay, uh, restate the motion that was made and then up.
Gotcha. So it was moved improperly second that. We have. The DIAB purpose definition as an agenda item on the next. The app meeting agenda. Don't have the date of the next meeting.
February eighteenth.
Have you, okay. It was moved improperly second that we have the DIAB purpose and definition as an agenda item. At the next DIAB meeting, which is February eighteenth. And there, is there any discussions on this, on this agenda item? Ms. Byrne, I know you have your hand up, but I, I don't think it's for the motion, but correct me if not. Okay. I don't see any, okay, I don't see any hands for discussion. Ms. Johnson, can you take the role?
Ms. Amaya? Ms. Blackwell? Ms. Bowman?
Hi.
Ms. Byrne?
Hi.
Ms. Dorsey?
Hi.
Ms. Doyle?
Hi.
Mr. Jongo? Ms. Catrelle? Ms. Patrick?
Hi.
Ms. Payne?
Hi.
Ms. Smith? Ms. Smith?
Can you hear me? Can you guys hear me? Oh, I.
Ms. Vickery?
Hi.
Mrs. Wingate Robinson?
Hi.
Okay. Non in the affirmative.
Thank you, the motion passes. Was you about to say something, Ms. Johnson?
No, I was gonna tell you to um, to say that part.
All right, um, Ms. Burke? Recognizes you.
Thank you. Um, as part of the information gathering, and I think Ms. Smith, you had talked about her, um. Going. Some questions, we're going to be going back to the Board to be answered ahead of our next meeting to kind of. Help inform the shape, structure, history of DAB. It would be helpful. To know, um, like what was the intention with reinvigorating this body in the first place? Obviously, I'm all for it, but it would be helpful to know since it seemed to have been. In response to a request or a need. I remember a Board Member, um, I believe it was Sheila Thomas Stafford. Um, initiated the kind of reinvigorating, um. But I'm. Yeah, it would be helpful to guide the conversation, I think, to make sure that we're at least addressing. What it was that prompted um, bringing this back to life, so to speak. And to my, I don't have that knowledge. If it was already asked and answered. Please excuse me and somebody send me a separate email, but I, I'm not recalling. Thank you.
Thank you for the question. Um, I could add a little context there. I know Board Member, um, Adam Stafford, as well as um, it's another Board Member. Her name is Jocelyn. It's Jocelyn Rowell, Board Member Rowell. I know that they have been advocating to get. Board policy seventeen hundred uh, reinstated for a while. Why there was no movement, don't have that historical knowledge. Um, but. Actually came to the Board of Education back in April of twenty twenty four. With a list of recommendations and board policy seventeen hundred was on that list. At that time, um. It was in response to a report that was made for special education. Um, and just knowing, hearing some of the feedback from parents about concerns. Um, that they had as a related to special, the services that their children were, were not receiving. Uh. Saying under special education, but not necessarily a spared student. It could have been um, a five oh four student. Um, I know sometimes when we say special education, sometimes everybody's just grouped in. Um, so the recommendation was put forth to the Board. And it is my understanding that the Board and Administration moved forward. Uh, with reinstating this group um, due to those recommendations. You know, there was a vote. That was passed by the Board for this policy to be reinstated. So that's a little background information. Um, but again, I don't know. At the time when Board Member Rowell and Adam Stafford was trying to get it reinstated, why did not move forward? I don't, I don't know that information. So hopefully, hopefully that helps a little bit. Um. It doesn't help the fact that that policy only covers three sections. Um, you know, of the work. And, and, and I think I recall in one meeting where, um. Perhaps at that time, back in twenty fifteen. Those were the pressing issues. Um, and I, I'm saying I think I recall because I think, I could be, I don't want to be making it up, but I could be making it up, but I think. That policy died off because maybe there was no current issues going on. Um. And I think that that was the statement that was made. So if that's in my mind, um. Perhaps in twenty fifteen, those were three prominent issues that they needed a subcommittee in place to address. Now we're in twenty twenty five, we have those issues plus more. Um, I just don't know if board policy seventeen hundred is the sole governing um. Document to guide our work. That's the part I don't know. That was a little long-winded, but hopefully it gives a little context, right? Let me just see if there's any, any more hands. Okay, I don't see any more hands, so we can, we can wrap up four point one.
I think um, Ms. Byrne had, she has her hand up.
He was just, she was just talking.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, all right. All right, so item four point two, subject matter experts involvement. I can't remember if this was Ms. Burns or if this was Ms. Payne. But um.
Sorry.
It was Ms. Payne. Okay, so I'll let you kick it off, um, on what, you know, what your thought process was with recommending this for the agenda.
Right, thank you. I, I, I was thinking, I'm on the um, HR, the Hiring um, Subcommittee. And so. I would think that part of that committee, we would need um, some insight. From the Head of Human Resources, right? The Chief Human Capital Officer for Prince George's County Public Schools. In terms of direction and some of the issues around staffing, we would need some reports around time to hire and those kinds of things. So my question was related to, as a committee, how do we go about making those requests? Getting the experts that we need to help inform the work of the group?
Thank you. Is there any more discussion? Ms. Patrick?
Thank you. I'd like um, for us to, in addition, I think, I think the Hiring Manager would be. Um, a great person to hear from, from. Um, but in addition, possibly considering extending an invitation to the executive leaders. Of the bargaining units that are represented. Within the district to speak on behalf of, you know, PGCEA, ASME, SEIU. Um, and then I think there is one more. So potentially extending an invitation.
Okay, PGEA, I think is the other one. Ms. Bowman, the Chair recognizes you.
Um, I would also extend to our capital program team. In terms of the access to buildings, we work, the Department of Special Ed works very closely with that team. So that would be another um, expert body.
Thank you. Any discussion from any other member? Ms. Vickery, the Chair recognizes you.
Thank you. I think we should also, um, a- and I'm not sure which team this would be. Um, but I think we need to um, have our vendor team identified or whoever manages any vendor contracts. Um, I'm thinking about the before and after care programs and I'm thinking about any other um, entities that engage within our schools. And not, just for clarity, I'm not talking about the vendors themselves. I'm just talking about within PG CPS, the Vendor Relationship Manager.
Thank you. I do not see any other hands. So I think the question that is on the floor, Ms. Johnson. Is whether or not there is a process in place to have SMEs. Um, involved with this board. Do you by chance know?
Um, I don't have the answer at the moment, but I can certainly follow up with you, with you all about that.
Okay, thank you. And I know that we identify several SMEs that we believe who will be valuable. If you guys think of any others, uh, feel free to let Chair Blackwell and myself know. Um, and we'll start. Um, that list. And then um, once we find out what the process is, um. Of course, we'll let you all know and then make sure that we, we follow that process to engage with them. Ms. Bowman, the Chair recognizes you.
I just had one more thought. There are certain administrative procedures that may align to the work of this committee. So. One example that we may want to have Robin Welsh as a subject medic, matter expert. Give any related administrative procedures. So like the one that I can think of is we have a long-range planning, um, Administrative Procedure twenty-five oh five. That talks about long-range planning for students with disabilities. That's actually an administrative procedure. And based on that, there are monthly meetings that I hold with various stakeholders to talk about facilities planning. And accessibility of buildings. So I just thought that may be helpful for the Board to have any related administrative procedures that align to the board policy.
Right, thank you. Right. Don't see any other hands. We can move on to the next agenda item. And this is related to data requests. Um, Ms. Byrne, I believe you had this um, on your list. And I know in the last meeting, um, it was discussed that we could engage with our Board Member Liaison. Um, as well as Ms. Bowman for data requests. I think, um. Think, well, I guess maybe let me pause and ask. Did we need clarity as a board on what the process is? Or was the fault to start discussion on? What are our? Um, what are possible data points that we could tap into? So Ms. Byrne, um, I'll yield to you to see, you made the recommendation for the agenda items. So I yield to see, um, if you had any additional information.
So I, I believe the data requests must have come from somebody else. I'm. Yeah, um, I'm going back to my email. No, m- mine was on the uh, focus of the Board, the purpose. And um. Yeah, alternative ways that we as the Board can contribute. Uh, so it may have been somebody else.
Okay, um. It was, oh, Ms. Payne. This was your agenda tonight. All right.
Oh, God. Um, may I speak? Okay.
Yes, the Chair recognizes you.
Yes, mine was more about the process for requesting data. And for the committee to understand what that um, process is. Um, I'm not quite sure we're ready. I have some thoughts about what data we might need, but I think as a committee, we need to meet and sort of talk about that. So. How do we go about the request? And then if there's any um, sort of time commitments around, when can we expect? Uh, to get answers to our data request. Um, what's the? uh to get answers to our data request? Um what's the commitment from PGCPS?
Thank you for that background information. Um, and you actually just made me think um earlier today. I also wanted to know, are there any like limitations with the data? Um, cause we may put forth a request and we may not get what we're anticipating. So it would be nice to know upfront what the limitations are um with the specific data that can be shared with this group. So, Ms. Johnson, um we know who our contact individuals are, but is there like a formal? They're more of a formal process when you have a subcommittee that needs to get data? Do we have to fill out a request form? Um, and, and, and in this case, we may have day, the data may be coming from the school side and may also be coming. School side meaning administration, but we also may have data um that may tap into what the Board of Education has received. So is there a formal process that we should follow?
Um, sure, and that's, and that's an excellent question. Um there isn't any that I could think off the top of my head. Um however, what I would suggest is maybe starting out, well, of course, you know, this would be a follow-up for um for, for me to look into. Um, and just seeing if there is something formal that you all would need to submit to us before proceeding um for granting information because understandably, there may be some things that are confidential, so it probably will also depend on what type of information that is. Um but we could certainly look into that for you.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Doyle, the chair recognizes you.
Thanks. Oh, you know, I, you just asked the question that I was gonna ask too, because there is, you know, like a PIA request. Um, I would hope that we could request data and not have to go through the, the formal process, just since we've been culminated by the board, but um I'll be very interested to hear about that. And I'm sorry for keeping my camera off. My connection is just not cooperating very well tonight.
Vice Chair, if I may also um step in to um Board Member Brown, also as your board liaison, uh she would be another resource as well for uh assisting with data requests. Um and I could certainly work with her on that as well.
Okay, thank you. The chair recognizes Ms. Patrick.
Thank you. Would just like to share that there is some data we may find helpful that is publicly accessible. For example, the administrative procedures in the district. So Administrative Procedure forty one seventy two discusses the process for requesting reasonable accommodations as a staff member. So those types of procedures are publicly accessible. Um, and so if we choose to critique or utilize them, it's not something we have to request.
Thank you, Ms. Patrick. Um, I don't see any other hands. Um, you raised a, a, a point that I also wanted to just bring to the table. You guys may already be thinking about this. Um it's always good to have the question in mind on what we're trying to get answered. Because that should drive our data requests. Um it, it wouldn't, it would not serve us any purpose to just haphazardly be um requesting data that's not really gonna tie back to a question. So when we're in our subcommittees, um I'm just, I just wanted to put on the table that we keep that in mind, have like your research question or establish your research question, so you'll know what type of data um is needed to help support it. Is there any further discussion on this item? See any? We'll, we'll follow back up once we get um some additional information. So I think that was our last agenda item. All right, is there um looking at my notes, guys, just give me one second.
So it would, we would be on five point O now.
All right. Okay, guys, we are at the end of the meeting. Um, so as far as next steps, and this, Ms. um Johnson, I'm, I was taking notes and running the meeting, so if I, if I miss something, let me know. So we're, we're gonna work, the chair will work with the um Board Member's Office to learn more about the purpose of Board Policy seventeen hundred, as that may help drive, drive, that may help in whether or not we need to expand the purpose of Board Policy seventeen hundred. Follow up with leadership. I think that's all the same thing there. This is not a, a next step. The other thing that we had discussed was um possible SMEs that could provide valuable information to this board. Um, and I only mentioned if you guys have any others that were not mentioned tonight to send those over to Chair Blackwell and myself. And then the last piece was just following up to find out if, if there's a formal process to obtain any um data that this board may need to request. Did I miss anything, Ms. Johnson?
Uh, no, I think I think you're good.
There is one other item, um but it was not, it was not a discussion item. Um, you guys did not receive the minutes from the January ninth meeting. Um, and that was, that was an agenda and agenda item. We will have those minutes for your review at the next meeting due to um the resignation of our reporting secretary. Um, it has pretty much delayed, we delayed us with supplying those minutes to you all tonight. So I did wanna put that out there. We'll have that for the next meeting. All right, Ms. Doyle, let's see your hand.
Thanks. Um, since we now know that our subcommittees can meet privately and we don't need to schedule them um with Ms. Johnson and coordinating the Zoom links and everything, could we get emails sent out? Like, for each group, could each group receive an email that is only their group's emails?
So the answer would be yes, but I think I need to just verify need to verify the number of members that signed up for each subcommittee, just to ensure um there isn't a quorum. If, if there, if, if there is the potential to be a quorum, then we need to coordinate with Ms. Johnson for those meetings. Well, let me, to answer your question, yes, but then I also, there may be a secondary step that needs to take place. Ms. Vickery?
I was gonna actually say that Ms. Doyle asked my question, so I'm good.
Fabulous. All right, so if there are no other questions, I think the business of tonight is done.
Excuse me, Vice Chair, um if you could just refer back to your um, your notes and those bullet points I have, do you see it?
Yeah, I'm getting ready to read them.
Oh, okay, okay, I just wanted to make sure, okay.
All right, no problem. No, I wouldn't shut us down without getting a vote. All right. The Vice Chair would like to advise the public that the next Disability Issues Advisory Board Meeting will be held on February eighteenth, twenty twenty five at six PM. Please continue to check the PGCPS Board webpage for more information and updates. The Vice Chair would like to thank everyone for joining us this evening. There being no further business, the time is now seven oh five PM, and this meeting stands adjourned. Actually don't need a vote. I gotta get used to this.